I'm Scott.
Good, good job.
I got some.
You're.
I call everybody in the orange book.
It's not free.
I graduated Woodston that year.
Oh, really?
Your father was at your college that year. That's what I thought you said.
Yeah, it's that I had maybe. But I do something else. They actually, if you go into all the old articles, little article on for cases to define. You can get everything all the way back to now, probably through the archives.
Unbelievable. You had that picture?
I have. I have.
Hi.
I haven't seen that one.
I don't know if there was, there was. It was a bird. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm doing the other one, the one with two. And it's.
I think Jack. My voice is really. You got the user.
Why?
I appreciate it.
Picture.
Little bit from. The first night, right?
Yeah. I've got a job.
Speaking of Jackson.
You behind him?
I'm number two, I'm behind him. So I'm always, it's the same engineers, it sounds like. If once, if you finish, I should be out of here, not here, you know. They only start seven thirty, so I have a half hour lead. Ah. No, this is the. Well, I don't have.
Oh, you're four.
I have to remember. And when I do, my buddy Sloan, he asks me.
Did I say it's on each?
I get paid, so I pay you.
You getting paid to be here?
By the hour, so just hoping it lasts longer.
You know, you could get overtime and there's minimum wage, you could really.
He does much better than minimum wage, believe me.
And there's child labor, that's a whole different issue that he has to deal with now.
Grandma gives him money, which Grandpa overpays him to do something I don't need to.
How about extra house or the studio?
That was last week's meeting, John.
Yeah.
You missed it.
I did.
Oh, that was. Yes.
Hey, I have a very.
They don't be, he said.
It's like too bad.
I don't need it.
You're it's up.
Don't let him in, don't let him in.
That's probably number one.
That's Jerry. That's Jerry, I recognize the jacket.
Oh, him you could have let in.
Did he get the call? About the absence of form, did he get the call?
This is Jewish time, they'll talk about twenty eight or something.
Hi guys, how you doing?
Hey, sir.
How are you? How are you?
I'm good.
Hello, man.
Hello.
Who are you? Grandpa.
Oh, my goodness.
He's my new assistant.
Right, now if you get to have a grandchild that old like your young age.
And he lets me know he's my good luck charm. I haven't lost one since he's been here, so I'm gonna start marketing.
You got pants, so you talking along.
You don't lose them when you're not here.
I was gonna say, your record with not here, that's too bad. Hey, sir. You might be working late tonight on your other aspects. Emergency squad.
I don't do the rain and snow like that. I let it off, I'm a, I'm a wimpy guy.
You don't have any for me tomorrow.
I do.
Oh, you do. Otherwise, I didn't.
I just see another one, so like tomorrow morning, okay? I already know I wanted them, so.
Okay. Okay.
So I'm more appealing already, but my doctor is being finer now.
But, but you gotta take it, and it's good.
Twelve hours, six hours a day.
It's live, so give me a sec.
That's all, so I meant.
So we're good.
How you doing? I'm not a voting member.
No, no, I'm faster than that.
Why did you say five, we need five out of five?
We're down to one chair. Uh, the only two that are on tonight.
He said he wasn't gonna make it.
Uh, it wasn't. Yeah.
Thank you.
You don't work a hard.
Are you up there now, too?
It's a conversion of the same day.
That's why I just got this one.
God, he's like, the guy calls me up. He says, did you? Somebody said, still tossing his warning board, guys, and it's like, well, it's like so I am. Yeah, hey, you, you two bells here today?
Actually, I hope so.
The helmet here is, is the airtail wear order.
I passed.
Oh, okay.
That you?
Yeah, that's me.
Nice, nice. Oh, my, he misses.
No, not on the list.
Do you think this?
Less than seventeen inches. We had seventeen inches.
Eight o'clock. Eight o'clock. Seven thirty.
We have clock, it's seven thirty. Forty three point three three.
Ninety nine. Less than one percent. The taxes have to say it is.
And the.
Wouldn't have to be, but it's only four, is that anybody?
Only because it's seventeen. The back yours for seventeen inches thick. I don't know, I didn't know that you were. You know, many, fifty, sixty years ago. Sixty, I didn't know what.
No, he's the only attorney. He's the only attorney with most possible. True, you've been kind enough to say that. Other ones don't know. Right, is this the same property that, that was the building as a part of the building? Or that's something? So you keep them and then they bring them up, and then you.
Go away.
Sort.
We're trying to notice some.
Sort that the.
It's not thirty anymore.
Thirty.
It's actually thirty four.
This has a price, those have a price to it. Well, I like.
You know, it's a while the society says they will have to pay.
Which other occasion is this? The one that you got away with on the seat. Once you play. You want the magic plan set. Yes. Problem is, why do you come to this? The whole, you know, like, sharp restrictions. Um, last but important for the two, I saw the buffer. And built from the. Where, where was she? Who are you, sir? How's your Thanksgiving? Good, good. Kirk, you know.
I got that, it's the.
But why is the coin?
He says, uh.
I'm here.
Yeah, it's nice. So what's going on? The last guy, I appreciate you. Had like four, kinda just hold the number. Right, this explosive sound makes it down. That could have been, I think it's supposed to be the. There, and you're turning full six out of five. I have sound, so I may, first case, the correct. Okay, what are you switching, I promise I'll be very quick.
Start the car at seven thirty five. I think we should just not matter.
We're, we're. We get hold, hold him out.
Where's the chairman?
The chairman's here.
Oh, Jim's here, okay.
This one, this one. Okay, so Jerry.
First thing of course, for me. Name of the boss before. What if this is? Well, I get it. Who is this one? Whether it's this, this location or not. It's alive.
That's it. Happy holidays.
How are you?
I just spent that the same.
We're. I know I have to treat.
I think this is just. You know.
I don't give.
Subdivision now.
I don't give. I agree with you, I hear you. Just take. This little ladder here. Is that where it is?
The minimum's really. We should make it out of here.
I'm sure you can ask me questions, I just like your voice. I didn't know this. I have your. I have your. From home, and I had to send you those.
How are you? Let's ride. I'm gonna hold the United, let's try to catch the plane with Newport. I guess we'll find out. I feel united from the phone. Am I the phone? I wanna cancel, twenty five minutes already.
Oh, wait a minute, it's not coming on.
Not, not, not. I can cancel if you'd like.
Okay, we got, we got a minute?
Yeah, yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nope, not there. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call tonight's meeting for order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised by the broker, New Jersey State Sun Challow, Madame Secretary of Roll Call, please.
Mr. Gillen, Mr. Halverson, Mr. Langley, Mr. NafTali. I'm here.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Inger, Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Halverson.
Here, I'd like to stand up, please rise to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is today, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. It's not working, the mic.
Is your mic working?
It's a twerking. No. Uh, does everybody can say hello to the minute.
So your recording mic is working? Your mic is not working.
The lights on. You here? The lights on. Is the recording on? I mean, we have a huge crowd here that no one ever can hear, you know?
Try and just speak up, everybody.
The report, so have you turned them on?
You guys, my place is not that.
The lights on.
Oh, you mean it's working?
Mr. Vali. Mr. Clark, come on forward and see if it attached.
Lights. We're working. Oh, it's working, okay.
Testing.
We're good. Testing. We're good, let's count, we're good. We just need to boot up. I really figured out there was an R and all. Something new. What happened to the chairman?
Now the chairman is.
Mr. Rose.
Danny Rose second. On resolutions.
This is on the minutes.
So prove the minutes, right, November eighteen.
Right.
Does anybody pay any attention?
I need a motion for the minutes of November eighteen.
I'm Stumpel. And Marty Rose second.
Okay, Mr. Gillen, not here. Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay, yes, I have someone else. Appeal number four one three oh, fair wish, as a request to carry to December second. I'm sorry, no, January sixth, twenty twenty.
Motion to carry appeal number forty one thirty, fairways at Lake Ridge, to carry for his sales.
Her witnesses were not available for this evening.
Can I get a motion to carry?
Motion.
Motion by. What is it? By motion and second by boarding, roll call, please.
That's Langley and Gross.
Yes.
That was for a technical issue, right?
Interpretation.
That's the interpretation.
This is just a journey. Yeah, okay, got it.
Okay, Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. NafTali.
Yes.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez. Okay. Uh, I also have a request from appeal number four one, oh wait, four one oh seven, High Point. They have to renotice because the zone is nine R twelve, the zone is all M, so they have to be renoticed, and they'll come back on January sixth.
Okay, I have a motion for appeal number forty one oh seven, High Point at Lakewood Condominium Association, that they have to renotice, so it's going to be. I guess January.
January sixth.
January sixth.
Motion.
Motion by Bush Langley.
Second.
Second by.
Rivian.
Rivian, roll call, please.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Langley. Mr. NafTali.
Yes.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay.
So anyone here for appeal number forty one oh seven, High Point at Lakewood Condominium Association, it will not be heard this evening, it will be heard on January sixth, twenty twenty. Thank you for the credit.
And that one will renotice.
And that one will renotice. Hold the chair, boys.
Okay, um, four one three three, Robert Kerschner. Have a request from Mr. Kerschner and Brian Flannery, uh, he's not feeling well, he couldn't be here this evening, he'll be here, like, to carry to January sixth.
Mr. Flannery, just one, uh, I'm sorry that you clamped on, I mean, well, this is gonna be the second time we're carrying it, we carried before.
First, first carry that was the shit in reach.
I'm sorry?
The first carry wasn't his, him asking for the carry. The first one, he didn't, he didn't care.
All right, no problem.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Halverson. Second by Bush Langley. Roll call. With waiver of time.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. NafTali. Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson, right here.
No, I'm rolling on it. No, this is just. Oh.
We're just carrying then. Okay, uh, also have a request from, what is it? To carry four one three seven, Madison Avenue Realty, I guess they still have objectives, and they're trying to work it out.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're trying to work it out with some of the nicest neighbors in town. Just to, just to be clear, last time, it was two weeks ago, which was here, we said there was some, there was, and we haven't had an opportunity to meet yet, so we have a carry of January, we're probably applying for us to meet, and trying to work out any issues.
Okay, um, so is everyone okay with forty one, this is the second time around, correct?
Yes. Okay, just two weeks ago, and it was on the plan for us.
Okay, so we'll, we'll consider this, um, one line. Okay.
I know, you have a motion.
Okay. Motion. Motion for, um, forty one thirty seven Madison Avenue, to.
Carry.
Carry. Motion by Judah. Second by, um, what is it? Uh, Marty Gross. Now, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Langley, you're not voting on this, correct? Mr. NafTali.
Yes.
Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes, okay, um, I guess that's it for now.
Yes.
Um, nine ten Park Avenue LLC.
Mr. Chairman, if you can, uh, I spoke with the applicant, and I asked, also, was Doyle, I could be Jackson for another application, and I asked if we were able to swap out, um, my application with this one.
Okay. Are you okay, really, you know, you're gonna wait here all night, you might take your own lady, you know, but.
I know Mr. Pepper's ability, I'm sure that you will.
He'll speed it up.
Walk to his case quick.
Okay, fine, so I'm gonna go to thirty nine sixty six C, Newport Estates LLC.
Newport and Bellevue Avenue, lot four ninety eight, lots one, ten.
For the record, I'm gonna recruit myself on this one. Why? Number three. So go to the back room, people.
Lot five oh one, lot one point oh one, R forty zero, to amend the previously approved subdivision to eliminate one lot and divide the project into seven phases.
Mr. Pepper, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, the town of Pepperton, we have the applicant, as a vote, they remembered this application before you previously for a use battery, which was granted, uh, we're back here tonight for, uh, the subdivision, um, and also phasing plan. Brian's marking some exhibits, uh, which we'll get some more in a second. We can't just have this word, Mr. Flannery? And then we'll go right to the exhibit.
Congress, you're aware or familiar with the whole thing, I hope you got. I knew Brian Flannery Jackson, a Jersey licensed professional engineer, special planner. A one and A two are the phasing plans, it shows the proposed phasing, uh, phase one, which would be the old Singer House, with one additional lot would be created. Phase two is the ten remaining lots, which would be closer to Newport Avenue. Eight three is a copy of the, uh, approved plan, uh, and what was approved was thirteen lots, as shown on that plan, what we're asking for, the proposed plan, is twelve lots. The one lot that I have the pink line through is being chopped in half, so we'll have a larger lot on each side. So it's a reduction in lots, it's probably the simplest application I've ever done, I wanted to make it very simple for the board to see. We're not asking for any relief, uh, that has, wasn't granted, because we're, is actually less relief that's needed because we have less density. The, uh, Terry's Report, uh, it, it's pretty straightforward, it indicates what the application is, it indicates the, the zoning that, uh, the used variance was granted, and a prior approval was granted, and indicates the, the, uh, lot width variance, and again, they were already granted, uh, we're not intensifying anything, we're actually lowering it. I don't think there were any other comments relating to that, uh, with respect to the justification for the variance that we're already granted, it's the same as last time. justification for the variance that we're already granted, it's the same as last time, the vision, master plan, vision statement says encouraged, uh, redevelopment and the municipal anti-law says encouraged.
What did you say?
I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Seven phases, there's only four blocks, am I?
Separate. Separate. Separate, not separate. Separate phases.
It's just two phases, the one, the one subdivision, it's seven phases.
It says on the genitals.
On the, uh.
Mr. Pepper, you said that there are waivers, but I see on page, third page, referring to waivers from.
What did you get, Eric?
Those were granted previously.
Correct, correct, we're, we're not asking for anything that wasn't already previous.
Any waivers regarding to previously granted are there, that's the reason.
So, I'm just, by phasing, then you're gonna, um, you're gonna subdivide it different, you're gonna have?
We're gonna subdivide, the first subdivision is gonna be?
And you give performance bond for one phase personnel.
Right, uh, and the, the improvements on the first phase would, would, yeah, it's already there, the road is built, so it, it would be setting monuments, or whatever the engineers office decides, and then the second phase would be where all the, uh, the work phase was.
Do you have any questions for board members? Open. Seeing none, to the public, appeal number thirty-nine-sixty-six C, anyone from the public who'd like to be heard, please step forward.
Sir, you're ready, right hand, you affirm or support a number of votes?
I got it. Walter Lucas. Uh, you want to?
I just thought your last name.
Luke L U C A S.
And address?
Sorry, L U C A S.
Thank you. Address?
One-ten, one-ten, whatever. Uh, I live there, and, and this project is needed and should be approved. That whole area that has been miss зoned for years, it needs zoning for families, that includes Maplehurst, Great Quay, that'll do, all of them down. Then again, I live there, uh, working out with, without this kind of approval, schools coming in, and they generate all sorts of problems. Any questions?
Yeah, what, how could it be possible where that mess, uh, that's likely?
You mentioned it, Jerry.
I grew up in Trenton, so it was a Philly state, until I moved to Ocean County, and the only team I could give, only Rattie Ears, running test, the only thing I could give was a mess.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else from the public wants to be heard on appeal number thirty-nine-sixty-six C, seeing none, I go to the public. Any comments or questions for board members?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the project by Mr. Langley.
I'll second that.
Second by Marty Gross. Roll call please.
Mr. Halverson?
Yes, this took too long.
Mr. Langley.
Yes.
Mr. Natale, Mr. Rivian.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
Good night.
Good job, everyone.
And, he said, good luck in Jackson.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're doing forty-four, oh, forty-one-three-one, nine-ten Park Lakewood LLC, Park Avenue, block two-thirty-two, lots two to five, B four zone. Preliminary and final major subdivision approval will be creating eighteen duplex lots.
Our chairman is here, he will take over. Book. What do we got there? Okay, who we got there?
Jackson.
Okay, I'm in P J.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of John Doyle, we have the applicant. We're here over seventeen inches, basically. We're trying to build duplexes like the old Point Bay Fuel Site, turn that otherwise wasted site into housing and systems, which is what most of our neighbors who've built recently are living in. The only reason we're this far and not the planning board is because although the tax map said we have conforming lots, that is thirty-three point three wide, a hundred fifty deep, our surveyor said maybe they're a hundred forty-eight point seven. So, instead of having ten thousand square feet, we have ninety-nine hundred and five to ninety-nine hundred and fourteen. Other than that, we'd be fully conforming, as Mr. Flannery will tell you. We read Mr. Uh, Derricks before it, suppose before it, and we think that you can respond to any questions there are, whatever there is, I'm sure we'll take care of it in the files.
We'll, we'll make this very, uh, very quick. This is the old Point Bay site.
That's correct.
Um, contamination, well, that's not our issue, that's if you get a clean little health, go have fun for yourself. Your, your, um, um, size of the lots are basically less than a hundred square, square feet, um, the minutes, okay? However, why are we at thirty-five percent of lot coverage?
That is a question that our planner and engineer will answer.
Let's see what you're planning to report, Mr. Flannery, do you raise, would you, you swear or affirm the number of acres?
I did, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey license, professional engineer, professional planner. Uh, A-one is a copy of the map that was submitted, uh, when I get back up here, you'll see it shows the nine duplexes, eighteen duplex units. Uh, A-two is a copy of the, uh, subdivision map for the adjourned property, which is highlighted in yellow, this was lot twelve, uh, and, um, the, uh, uh, A-three is a copy, sheet fifty is a tax map, it shows the subject lots in R and, and lot twelve next to it, as well as all the other development in the area. Uh, and A-four is a copy of a Google Earth map that shows where the site is, and you can see the, the whole remainder of the area, uh, is developed in, in this type of development. It's in the B four, on A-three, you can see the zone line, this property is in the B four, across the street is the R ten, and in the R ten, there's duplexes and townhouses and development consistently. As you can see on A-three to the, uh, south of, of this property, uh, there are duplexes that were approved, and those were approved on lots six-point-oh-two to six-point-oh-six, and those lots are thirty-three point, thirty-three point six-five feet wide by a hundred forty-eight feet. Again, there, the tax map for them had said it was a hundred fifty, uh, and you can look on the tax map, as you look up the street, R three lots that I've circled in red, all say it's a hundred fifty feet feet, but the surveyor said a hundred forty-eight point six, that's seventeen inches we're short by. So, it, other than the fact that the three yards of these are seventeen inches shorter than what the ordinance requires, it would be a byright application at the zoning. So, the?
Planning board.
At the planning board, yes.
He said zoning.
That's what he meant.
That's what I meant. The, the chairman will tell you, you guys know what I'm gonna say, sometimes I don't say it right, but you know what I mean. So, so it, it, other than that seventeen inches, it would be a byright application, it's no different than any of the development that's around there, it's what makes sense for this particular piece of property. Uh, the, the B four allows schools, it can allow businesses, it allows a whole lot of things, it would have more, uh, trip generation than the eighteen duplex units that, that were proposed. And the eighteen duplex unit, uh, if, if you were gonna look at the traffic, uh, that's generated by them, the peak hour traffic, and, and we have the traffic engineers come here, it's gone a lot of time, peak hour traffic is, is less than two units, less than two trips, uh, per unit, we have eighteen units, so you're looking at thirty peak hour trips on, on this road. If you compare that to a school or business or anything else, this is the only thing that makes sense. Uh, getting to the, uh, the, uh, question on the thirty or thirty-five percent, the ordinance for, uh, townhouses and duplexes in the condition uses allows thirty-five percent. That was done when the R seven five was changed, everybody decided a ten thousand square foot lot, thirty-five percent would make sense, because everybody had asked for variances. Uh, in this particular case, i- if we look at the, uh, the ordinance eighteen I O three D for V four, listed there is townhouses, when you go to the townhouse section eighteen ten ten, it says townhouses, of which can be a two-family, uh, so a duplex, and it allows thirty-five percent.
It had to be a single family that based on apartment.
That the?
Exactly, exactly.
Well, a, a side-by-side two-family, and, and that has been accepted by the planning board on, on numerous occasions. This, this is, this is the zoning board, uh, I, I presented the same testimony.
You should commission also, but this is still the zoning board.
They don't mean sideboard.
Uh, and, and the, right, to me, it's clear reading of your notice, I'm happy, you have to get out and read through it, when you, uh, it, it specifically indicates, uh, it can be two rather than three for the purposes of this section, it can be two, two is a duplex, uh, and, and duplex is allowed at thirty-five percent. If the board feels that the thirty, the thirty-five percent isn't what's allowed by the ordinance, uh, my testimony is certainly thirty-five percent is what's appropriate.
Okay.
With the, uh, with the coverings, everything else, and, and it would be justified, uh, for the grant of the variance, uh, and that'll?
Do you want to comment for a moment? Right away. Um, Terry, what is the duplex ordinance? Thirty percent or thirty-five percent? Now, townhouses, now two-family houses, duplex ordinance, sixty feet wide, and R seven five by a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and thirty, step down, sir, what is the?
It's thirty percent, I don't have a copy of the duplex ordinance with me, I'm gonna ask Fran, Fran, do you, do you have a copy of the ordinance?
I don't have it both.
You don't have? The duplex ordinance is thirty percent.
Brian has. It's ninety percent. The duplex may be higher, I know it increased a number of the residential zones, um, I was about.
And we, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna put duplexes in on eighty-five hundred, uh, here's section. But, if, if you wanted to compare what makes sense, ten thousand square foot lot is the R seven five.
Correct.
The R seven five allows duplexes at thirty-five percent. So, if we wanna?
Okay, so you're using here the, the R, the ten thousand duplex ordinance, the R seven five slash ten thousand duplex ordinance, is that what you wanna put into here? What, what ordinance do you wanna put in here?
I, I, I'm, I'm willing to, to cut this pie any way the board is comfortable, my professional opinion is section eighteen dash ten ten applies, and sections? Section eighteen dash ten ten allows, uh, thirty-five percent.
On what?
It's a conditional use.
It's a conditional use, and this meets the conditions of a?
What is the heading of eighteen dash ten ten?
Excuse me?
Condition used for where?
It, it says townhouses, but it says for this section, may, maybe?
Townhouses, and in townhouses, you can put in eighty-four, uh, eighty-five hundred square foot duplexes.
That's, that's a different section.
Where it's an attached zone, we can then go ahead and put in an eighty-five hundred square foot duplex, you can go up to thirty-five or forty percent, and you wanna take that adopted for the R seven five slash, um, um, R, R ten duplex zone, and say you can go in at thirty-five percent?
Well, the, the?
You're trying to mix and match.
Uh, I'm not trying to mix and match, to me?
Yeah, well, I'd say.
To, to, to me, it's section eighteen dash ten ten, which says townhouses, but then says, in this chapter, townhouses, they consist of two families, that's specifically eighteen dash ten ten.
So, again, I, I, I'm not such, I'm not such a genius like you, what are we trying to put in here, and what zone? An R seven five slash, a duplex is permissible, or the townhouse on eighty-five hundred, one for the other, now?
What we're trying to put in here is the B four allows townhouses as a conditional use, and as a townhouse, or, or it allows, uh, let, let me read it, so that, um? Right, conditional uses is townhouses, and section eighteen dash ten ten says townhouses can be, uh, a two-unit building. So, uh, the, you can, you can look at it, and we, we know the ordinance is very complicated, the ordinance also says anything that's permitted in the, uh, the B three, and the B three says anything that's permitted in the B two and the R one, and it goes back to townhouses and duplexes.
Then you can put an apartment house here also.
Yes, you could put an apartment house here, but, but, but an apartment house doesn't fit, so my question, here, here is, here is?
That's such a great piece of rock, man.
Well, it, it would provide? It would provide more housing opportunities, but it's, it wouldn't fill in the neighborhood, this is infill development.
Who cares what's in there?
I, I care about the neighborhood, the families that are moving in care about it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, th- this is infill development, the, the buildings to the south of us are on thirty-three foot wide lots, almost a hundred fifty feet deep, the buildings to the north of us approved as the planning board, uh, thirty-three feet wide, a hundred fifty, all the way up the street.
Yeah, all the way up the street, one of, one of them all, are they all thirty-five percent?
My recollection is the ones that did not have, because the governing body changed in probably like two thousand and fourteen, from thirty percent to thirty-five percent, because everybody that was coming in was asking for a variance, because when you include the, the covered porches and, and all the other parts of the building that were now thrown into the coverage, the thirty-five percent, the thirty percent didn't work, so the, the governing body saw that in the R seven five and some of the other zones, that everybody was asking for relief, thirty-five percent is, is what was getting approved, and then they changed the ordinance to allow on ten thousand square foot lot, thirty-five percent coverage.
Okay, um, I have another question. I, I, I still don't understand, the answer yet to this one, but I'm just gonna spin our wheels, and I hope everyone's a bit confused, so we can move on. I have another question, I have over here a plan from New Line, dated three-eleven, not sealed, not signed, which says thirty percent, uh, lot coverage, less than thirty percent lot coverage, everything else is the same, and we hear a signed sealed plan, which says, dated by July first, two thousand and nineteen, sealed, um, and signed, and says thirty-five percent. What, and you have this as exhibit A-one, so which is right, the exhibit, which is unsealed and unsigned, or the, or the one that I have in front of me sealed and signed?
Signed is?
Because if this is thirty percent, I've got even?
The subsequent one showing thirty-five percent is correct, the layout, generally speaking, of A-one is correct, but as to the number, it is thirty-five percent, because we want to answer the question, yes, the best question, Mr. Chairman, what are we trying to put in here, what we're trying to put in here are?
How many pounds difference in the five pound sack?
No, no, we're trying to put in here duplexes that are equal to, in its nicest notes, that have been previously approved by the planning board. On thirty-three and three.
Mike, Jeff, Mike, direct. The recording's done. Okay, Tommy, please. Jeff, the chairman, Terry, are you guys, we're trying to, to get over here?
No.
No?
I would say higher.
I know what you're not gonna get.
Thirty percent versus thirty-five percent?
No, 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 not in that, not in that, it's the same extent, I'm talking about the, the question before.
You're talking about the subdivision map?
Yeah.
No.
It's thirty, are we trying to, are we trying to put in a thirty percent, are we not, is it, is it the B four zone, are we trying to put in here, or the R seven five slash ten zone, are we trying to put in here, one?
It's a B four zone, and he wants thirty-five percent coverage.
And? And the question, as I understand it, is whether or not a variance is necessary. These subdivision plans identify 30% of the ceiling, and indicate that a variance is requested.
So, what are you, what is it, Jerry?
This is one of those where, again, I'm looking at an outdated version of the code. I'm looking at the 2013 PPO. I'm hearing Brian testify. I can't get online, unfortunately, and look at the online PPO.
The application and the notice is to give a use, a variance approval, for 35% coverage. Question for variance.
But I'm trying to... Okay, sorry. I'm trying to see, okay, I got it, I got it.
You understand?
And why are we at 35%? How wide are these houses?
The... We meet the setback requirement, so they would be the 33 and a third minus required setback. We haven't sought a side setback, we haven't sought a front or rear setback. So, within the envelope, it fits. And that goes back to your question, what are we trying to do here? We're trying to be consistent with our neighbors, we're trying to be consistent with what's been built, we're trying to build a unit that is livable and appropriate to the degree that our ordinances say should be 30%, or it's to say it should be 35%. We're just trying to be in that range, and that's what the ordinances have done. You shouldn't be less than 30, certainly, and you certainly shouldn't be more than 35. But we were in that range with a conformant, excellent structure that will give this town the opportunity that has done with 20 feet of fuel and everything that it brings.
What's the size of the footprint that these homes would be?
Yeah, 30 to 35.
30 to 35. I'm figuring at 30% you have a three towns.
I have at least in my file, what I presume are the Portland.
I have here a 23-foot wide house.
I have your...
The width is not the issue. The width...
It's a 23.
My comment is...
And then there's one that's a 26.
The lot of 5,000, these individuals, 5,000 square foot, 30% of that.
But they're all, they're all the same 35.
It's 30% of the 5,000. 1,600 square, that would be the 4,000. Or would be 6,000, 3,000, 3,500 square foot duplexes, as opposed 4,000 square foot. That...
What does that mean?
35%. That's how you... That's how you... 35%. And this is what I...
Thank you.
Now, so I see, I see a house...
Right, I see a house of 61 by 23. What is that? 61 by 23?
1,400.
61 by 23?
61 by 23 is 1,400.
1,400 square feet. Okay, that's a foot.
That's a foot.
Then you have 1,400 square foot basement, and 2,800...
Forget about the basement, let's do first and second floor.
Well, let's not forget about it.
2,800 square feet. 2,800 square feet, first and second floor. I have another one over here, that's 26.4 by 65.
1,700 square feet.
All right, I'll walk with, words are saying out, but it's a 1,600 floor.
Well...
That's what the plan is called for. I see a 45-foot backyard, right, Brian? Is that what I see there?
Yeah.
I see four parking spaces, right? And what's existing there now is oil tanks and waste oil and hazardous material, right?
And the redable.
And I don't see a problem.
And we are, brother.
And we drew, what we must be...
No, I want...
But it doesn't fit. It fits in the neighborhood.
Are you hungry?
Yeah.
I know.
35%. It fits. What is the character of the neighborhood? The character of the neighborhood in this town is duplexes. And that's what they put in there.
The question is...
With a backyard and train tracks behind it. So, here we're giving this guy a hard time. All right.
And what? Mr. Chairman, the ordinance says what's permitted is what's in the V3. The V3 says what's permitted is in the V1. The V1 says what's permitted is in the R1. So, if you wanna talk duplexes to duplexes, you go to the R1 section of the ordinance, 18-902.
Okay.
Design regulations for single family and two-family, 35% building coverage.
Okay.
Why in a duplex on 10,000 square foot lot, in the R1, does 35% make sense? In the R75, which is...
Brian, you got me convinced.
Thank you.
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Got it.
So, lot number 209 and 208, both have driveways backing out into East Ninth Street.
That's an excellent point, and it should be a condition in the approval that there be a turnaround, so that the vehicles would be able to turn around.
You wanna do all of them or just of those?
For those lots.
What are we doing? Turnaround. In the...
He's building a shoulder for them. No, 209 and 10 and 208 are backing out into East Ninth Street.
On what?
East Ninth Street.
Yeah.
Coming out of East Ninth.
Yeah, but the turnaround would be another, another block to a heart. And the second one. Why do you have me convinced?
Hopefully, we have the hungry too.
No, I'm not hungry. I have my food.
I have the night's work.
So, the back comes to East Ninth.
Okay. Anyone in the public wanna be here and step up?
Chairman, I just wanted to comment, the suggestion of doing a turnaround between 2.08 and 2.09 because of East Ninth Street, that is feasible if you have easements between the two projects.
Yeah, yeah.
But what I'm trying to say is that that's another becoming another block, another park. We've got a number of places where we've done that, and I hope we see cars parked in Brenton.
But, Mr. Chairman, at least we're giving them the opportunity to do the right one. As the governor says, it's the right thing to do.
It's violating the rules.
That's right, the governor says it's the right thing to do. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could finish my testimony before we have the public come up?
Yes.
I think there's only one member from the public, they'll probably wanna ask you a question, you should have more to get.
Okay, go ahead.
So, as indicated in the report, it's in a V4 zone, and duplexes are permitted. We meet the area, we don't, we're short by a de minimis amount. The lot depth is less than 17 inches short of what we need to be performing. So, as indicated, we're asking for lot area variances for the duplexes, and a minimum that we're asking for is 9,905.68 square feet for 10,000 is required. The building coverage, in my opinion, as I expressed, and the chairman relinquished, is that I think that 35% is what's allowed. If you look at it from a conditional standpoint, 35% if you go back to the R1, which is what it refers to, 35%. And it's my testimony that's not needed. If the board decides that it is needed, it's my opinion that it's a justifiable variance. It would be a C2 variance to benefit that way.
Have we needed sidewalk setbacks here? All the sidewalks?
All the sidewalks comply, we're providing sidewalk, we're complying with the zoning board standards, so that as people drive down, they'll be able to see each and one next to which was approved by the planning board, it's not gonna look as nice as this one is. And the one-third upgrade in the front, and the landscaping and the sprinklers. With reference to the variance treaty requested, the master plan of 2017, on page two indicates all the growth we have. On page three, it says it's important to plan for residential development. On page seven, the same report, division statement says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles and eliminating those high stores that are there now, certainly meet that. Housing strategies has a whole bunch of things that says we should do.
Can I give you the criteria?
The municipal land use flow in JAC 40.52 under the purpose of the Act, encouraged action to guide the appropriate use of development of all land in the state, in a manner with more public health safety morals and their welfare. It's my testimony that does dispose of it. The property is particularly well suited to this, as you can see on A3, everything around is the same, and it enhances the general welfare. And important is certainly grant the variance without any detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, or without any detriment to the public good. It's my testimony, this is an enhancement to both the public good and the zone plan.
Based entrances. What do you think?
It would be the standard condition, there would be one, there would be one basement entrance, exterior basement entrance, and no stairs directly up to the attic.
Okay, fine. And we'll have the public, anyone in the public please step up.
This time I agree with Mr. Langtry. Hope I could call you Mr. Not Brad, I don't know any of this information. This project is being geared for Racineum, that are coming from Brooklyn. Mr. Brug, Imperial is over here, he's going to be the real estate agent, then he brings them all here. They're bringing some live in, they're bigger houses, two reasons.
I disagree with you, I just have testimony that there's a shortage of housing in the neighborhood.
Well, no, 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 it was shortage of housing because everybody from Brooklyn is coming in. And the lakefront that's living over here being pushed out to Jackson.
Who would like this tax if I see them?
I like everybody.
We take some of this time.
Go ahead.
Racineum, they have more kids, so they eat more space to live in, so you need to have bigger houses. Plus, they enjoy their space more. That means if we give them a bigger foyer, give them a bigger sleeping room, but they tend not to use, and you give them a bigger dining room, living room, it's more spacious, they enjoy it. They're coming from Brooklyn, they have smaller houses, they wanna come over here, they enjoy the bigger ones. So, leave it bigger. As far, now I just have a question for Brian about the basements, I'll tell you why I'm making this question. We have 5,000 illegal basements, I'm not talking about legal, illegal, the fact is, it's a little bit uncomfortable that all of this could have been legal if there would have been sprinklers in the basement, and now we're adding another 36 to the total of 5,000. And I'm asking Brian, is there going to be finished basements over here, if it's going to be rented, and if you're going to put a sprinkler, that it might be the 36 that will be a start of being legal? What is your answer on all these three questions? Thank you.
I got confused when you said 36, there's only 18 units.
18 units?
Yes.
Nine structures, 18 units.
Oh, nine structures, 18 units. The reason why I made this mistake, I just asked Mr. Brug how many units there are, and he goes with 36. So, Mr. Brug, obviously, was trying to fool me around, and he got me! It doesn't add up to 36, so something is off.
The ordinance clearly says there only allows one basement apartment. The applicant is not asking to exceed the ordinance. And my testimony would be the same as always, that the builder will follow the building codes, whatever the building code says, or whatever the families want, that's what we'll give them.
So, let, I'm sorry, let's cut to the chase. Is this going to be an apartment, or is it going to be living space for upstairs? What is your testimony? Just come and go with me, Brian, and everything I'm saying is, we'll do what the building code is doing. I know this zoning board does have the building department, but comments say it's going to be apartments, it's going to be illegal, but we cannot control what people do.
There's going to be a permitted separate apartment in each basement.
The ordinance allows a separate permitted apartment in each basement.
It's one exterior steps, no exterior steps to the attic.
That is right.
And will the applicant agree to comply with the one-third of the front of the building from the structure, and the sprinklers, and the landscaping?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else in the public? Seeing members close to the public, Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
One, one place, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to address two things. One thing, Mr. Gross brought up, but the two middle ones seem to be larger, is there a reason for that?
There's an easement in between them, they're not large, they're deep. So, they're narrower and...
Narrower and deeper, okay. Can you address what you would do on the record? Mr. Gross mentioned something interesting, there's a safety issue close to House by Ninth Street. Could you address on the record what you would like to do?
Well, what we would do is push the driveways up a little more, and we'd have a common turnaround in the back, so that these ones could back into the open space in between, and then pull out forward, and these would do the same.
Back who, back to the driveway?
They would back in the driveway from 2.08 would back onto 2.09 a little bit, turnaround and come out, and 2.09 would back into...
They go out first instead of...
That's what we do, that's what we did, put the...
They stagger.
On ready.
Yes, yes. I just want to know, it's just the safety issue, come out first, you can see what's going on, it's not that... I'll make a motion to wait.
I don't think they have to, I think they can't be more than two feet.
They still have to be staggered.
I don't think so.
They're duplex, they're not misstaggering.
Maximize. Townhouses is a required sashing every two units. duplexes is not required. Some people do it, and it limits how much, but they're gonna do whatever the ordinance says. You can see they have plenty of depth to do whatever the ordinance says.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
With the conditions mentioned, Chair?
I have a motion to wish, Langtry, can I have a second?
I just want to make, you're making a motion regardless of whether this needs, you know, whether the ordinance allows 35%. If it doesn't, then you're making a motion with a variance.
I'll repeat my motion. I make a motion to approve as is, with the, with the review, what we've discussed.
Yeah, 35%, add the application of 35%.
Okay, not more.
All right, please. Okay, add the application of 35%. Second Amendment, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.